Now we're going to transition into our normal monthly committee meeting where we talk about setting the agenda for the next voting meeting. And then there will be a third part to our evening tonight. Following this session, we're going to have a short business meeting because there's a few things we have to vote on. Okay? So at this point, Megan is going to swear in, our newest assistant superintendent.
And is with much pleasure and to do this with you. I'm a notary and so it's under that authority that we're going to do this. So if you could raise your right hand. I, Dr. Mark Korsinski.
I, Dr. Mark Korsinski.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
I will support.
Obey.
Obey.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this Commonwealth.
And of this Commonwealth.
And then I will discharge the duties.
I will discharge the duties.
Of my office.
Of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Let's go. We'll just start taking care of some of these housekeeping items. We don't need to do the pledge or roll call since we never adjourn. I will announce an executive session that we will be having, so that's the fourth or fifth section of tonight. So don't get excited that you can leave as soon as we vote, okay? You've got to stick around, so. So that will happen afterwards, but that will be to discuss personnel legal matters and to receive information. At this point, if there's any public comments on the agenda, please come forward. You have two minutes to make any comments or questions about the agenda. Nothing online?
No.
Nope? Okay. So let's move into the committee items. And just like other meetings, what we're going to do is assemble the consent agenda for the next voting meeting. Is Darren on? Yeah. Let's move on to facilities then. And under facilities, Jim.
Yes, looks like we have three items here tonight. First one is a presentation on IMS project. Second will be a presentation by Draw Collective on the new K-5. And the third item will be amendment to the Hayes Design Group agreement. So the first item will be a presentation on IMS project.
Thank you, Mr. Modrak. Oh, did I close that?
Is that the one you loaded up?
Yes. So just a slight change, I'm actually going to do a quick update on the bus garage and then roll into the IMS update, just so everyone can know where we're at. My name is Andrew Campanera. I'm with the Hayes Design Group, for those who don't know me. The bus garage site obviously is in use by the district right now. You've been using the bus garage probably for the last five or six months at this point. There's a little bit of remaining work going on there. Landscaping is about 80% complete, but it's actually ongoing. That's just their current status. They hope to finish that by the end of the week, weather permitting. The card reader, which is in the process of being relocated, will happen in the next couple of weeks. It'll move from basically one side of the drive aisle to the other, making it easier for the people to swipe access into it. The only challenge is we want to actually get the card reader until July right now. It's been a long lead item. It was ordered back in October. We just keep waiting for it. And the last is there are a few items from construction that are still in the process of being cleaned up. There are some gaps at the bottom of the fence. The fence is straight. Some of the grating just kind of dips down in places, so they're just filling that in. So they're just, you know, you can't crawl underneath the fence essentially. And then last is some line striping missing. So with that, I did want to show a few photos. So this is actually some before, just for those who just need to jog their memory. As you can remember, it was largely a dirt and gravel lot prior. As you can see, the space between the two buildings on the bus garage site and then the open parking lot. Now, today, you can see we've added a concrete pad between the two buildings, you know, take more of the turning when the buses turn in and out of those garages, and then the asphalt lot. In addition, we've added some landscaping, some grass, some things the municipality required. We've also added bollards for safety at like the electrical generator location and the gas location, just some safety items as well. In addition to those, we've added bollards around the site at the power station locations. So each set of buses gets a bollard with a power station behind it. That's so they can plug in for their warming blankets in the winter. In addition, we ran extra conduits to those locations, so if you do get electric buses in the future, you can then run new electrical wires in those, so we can have power for the buses there as well. And then in addition, at the fuel pump station location, again, we added concrete for durability as your buses will, you know, pull up and stop there when they gas up. That's the update on the bus garage. Anyone have any questions on the bus garage? All right. Moving right along on IMS Phase Two. We did successfully obtain permits in the last month from Bethel Park. That's for both the building and electrical. So those permits are in place and SiteLogic has actually begun work on site, and they'll give you an update in a moment on that. In addition to the permits being in place and work starting, we did want to talk a little bit about the construction timeline on the project. So as you can see at the bottom of the screen, there's a chart. There's a light green schedule was what we originally planned. So back in October, we worked with SiteLogic to create a, to create a set of bid documents, which they bid, and at that time, we were a little bit over budget. We then worked with the district and SiteLogic to do some scope reduction, and then we redocumented that scope reduction so we could get a permit for you and then rebid the project, which is all, obviously all happened recently. And in the last month, we started shop drawing review with SiteLogic, which basically means, you know, they are giving us the actual products you're getting in the building. So we're reviewing those, marking up anything that needs to be modified in them, and sending them back. And then they've actually started demolition on site, which Steve will talk about in a minute. The bottom chart shows where we're currently at, so that's the April-May timeframe, which we just are going through right now. Phase Two A is actually started a little bit right now with demolition. And the project will actually carry through per their current phasing schedule that I think they're still trying to work through, basically October of next year. But as you can see in the schedule, it is a little bit longer construction duration than originally planned. Any questions on either of those items?
My question is, where are we with the elevator in IMS? I'm going to ask until I know it's functional.
That is a great question, and Steve would actually probably be the better one to answer it.
Yep. So the contractors actually finished the installation of the elevator, which now allows us to put the veneer around the outside of the elevator. That we're holding off until the kids are gone because it would require us putting scaffold on the inside, and at this point in time, it doesn't make sense to put something up that would put kids in any kind of jeopardy. So the intention is to have it up and running by the time school starts. And in a way, actually, it was kind of a blessing that it was kind of held up because we found out in the Phase Two drawings that there was extensive amount of work outside the elevator lobby that would have required us to tear the ceiling back up. So luckily, we didn't have the ceiling in place and didn't have to tear out finished work to accommodate some changes in the design. That's the elevator. That's Phase One. Phase Two, as Andrew said, we're in demolition phase right now. Some of you have made notice that we actually put a hole out of the side of the building where one of the windows is that, to mitigate having to get material through the actual school itself, up and down that ramp. It's still critical to get materials in and out of there, but this way, it probably takes two-thirds of the traffic that we would have normally had to generate to get materials in and out by creating that hole in the side of the building. So once it's all done, it'll be rebuilt and you'll never even notice there was a hole in the building. So demolition, electrical. Generally, all the light fixtures have been taken out of the second floor. We haven't started on the first floor yet, but we will be in there starting next week. We're doing some accommodating right now on the ground floor for the nurse's suite and the gifted classroom, so we're just staying away from that area until school's out, so we don't have any impact on the kids in those areas. Any questions?
Is there any change to the calendar, you know, not only this summer, or it's probably too late for the summer, but for next summer, that we should be thinking about, you know, because your Phase Two C is scheduled over the summer? Things that we should be thinking about in terms of, you know, not finishing school too early or too late, or not starting too early to give you enough time to finish that?
I certainly think you should consider when you come back to school in 2024, just because, to give us as much time as we can. We're already expecting that we're going to have to work probably some double shifts, weekends, just mainly in that ramp area. But it's still, that Phase Two C is pretty extensive with cafeteria, kitchen, some of the corridors, and again, with the ramp and new stairs and elevator.
Okay.
So if you could push that start date back, I think you're already established for your completion date for 2324, so.
Right.
Not much we can do with that, but.
Okay.
Steve, you had also indicated, you and I had a brief conversation about the need, just to, let me back up and say, all this work's happening on second shift, so the building's essentially empty when you're moving in and out and taking care of all this demolition work. But you had indicated your plans to close off that back roadway to IMS while the guys are back there working because of the safety factor, as cars zipping by and there's bobcats coming and going. We don't want anybody to be hurt.
Correct, yeah. It's, right now, it's going to be daily, four days a week for a couple of weeks, and when the demolition crew's done and gone, then it'll be more of a periodic thing. And same thing over the summer. We're just going to want to make sure that, you know, if somebody's unloading material back there, that, you know, somebody coming, driving up through there is not going to inadvertently hit somebody, so.
Yeah.
And I appreciate the opportunity to shut that road down. That was a, that was a great benefit.
Just wanted to make sure we got that out there. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Did you want to view of any more?
No, that was my last slide.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Draw Collective here for information on the new K-5 elementary center.
What do we want?
I thought that's what you were going to do. Yeah, actually, while they're setting up, could I ask Andrew to just explain the motion that's on, it's on consent, but explain this need for a revised amendment? And that gives you guys time to set up there. Dan?
All right, well, thank you. So we sent over to the district an amendment to our owner-architect agreement. In that amendment, it includes the additional services when we help the district with looking at scope reduction, redoing our drawings, and helping SiteLogic rebid the work, as well as covering the additional construction time that's now anticipated in the project. And that's what the amendment covers. So it covers the extra site visits in there and just modifies all the dates to match what the current construction plan is.
And the net change to the final cost was less than $100,000, right?
Correct.
Yeah, I don't remember the number, but there is a change in the cost.
The net change is $189,000.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew.
Any questions for Andrew about that amendment?
Nope.
Looks like we're good.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Extra extras. Where are we at?
Administration.
Just mark out one.
You got it.
On that. So I was just going to move it, because this is a presentation, then we just move on.
Sure. Item three is actually an action. We're asking.
That's the same. So Mr. Christensen, so there are item number three, since there was no questions. Move it to the consent agenda for now, our next meeting.
Sure. Okay.
I understand you were one of the, one of the judges.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, I missed it.
And, oh, both, yeah.
We were sunning ourselves in the parking lot. It's gorgeous night out, so let's make this quick.
We did appreciate that we had some of our partners participate in that experience.
Oh, we had so much fun. The kids are so talented and really good presenters. Fantastic. We really enjoyed it. I'd come back every year for that. It's really.
So the story that you were the Simon Cowell of the panel is not true?
No, absolutely not. Wait, where's Brett?
He's not here.
Yeah, he's tough. He's a tough judge.
All right, thank you.
We're ready when you are. Okay? For a change, we did handouts tonight. Normally, we try to be paperless, but sometimes when we're going on the visuals, it goes by so fast. We thought maybe we'd leave you with something that you could take home. So tonight, just a quick update, and then a little bit on the outside, a little bit on the inside, for fun tonight. Things are really progressing well. So our county approvals are in process. We did follow through with minor comments that we received back from the county on the stormwater submission. And the real thing that we're waiting for is the stream crossing. I think I've mentioned that before. The upper portion of the property has a, where our driveway goes, there's a little tiny stream. And we're in what's called the waiver two process, which is their short process. And so that was all submitted, and once that is done, I think that will answer pretty much everything, and we think we should be good for July approval at the latest. So things going on, on schedule from that point of view. The municipality, we've been working with the municipality and planning commission, and that's going fairly well. We're expecting that to go to council here at the end of May, and then ultimately, hopefully for a vote in June. So that also is on track with the original schedule. And then sewer authority, we've got good news. After all of the machinations and the flow counting and everything like that, it has come back that the flow of coming off of our new site with the new building is not going to significantly change the situation downstream, which means that we'll be on the shorter track of approvals for that, and that is the September-October timeframe. And they're good communicators. It's been going pretty well, and they're good to work with, so we usually find out if there's any roadblocks and tell you right away. So that works good for being on track for the September bidding. So hopefully, what I'd really like to see is to know that that approval is in our hands or very shortly, the paper is coming, and then I'll feel really good about going out for bid on around September 1st, like we're planning on. So should be good.
Just one question, since you're the sewer part. Take it, then we don't have to pump up, everything will go down?
Everything will go down.
Because we'll make sure.
Yeah, gravity flow. Thank goodness. It's where that stuff should go. The other thing that we have on the schedule coming up, we haven't decided exactly the date, but we've been talking with administration. And we have a forum that we follow that helps us all understand how to get through the Act 34 hearing process. And currently, right now, we're looking at the end of July. I tentatively used the 25th of July, but we'll get to a final date here shortly, I think, for the actual hearing itself. Masero, we're still waiting for their final cost estimate. I think that's any day now, and then I'll be able to finish the document, the draft document of the booklet, and that'll go to Doug, and Doug will do his financial magic, and then we'll be ready for June board meeting discussions, and ultimately, an approval of a maximum not to exceed number, specifically for the regulation. Not necessarily for your building, but for the regulation. Any questions about that for right now? By the way, the hearing is just that. It's a hearing to inform the public. It is not a board action night or anything along those lines. So I'm going to turn it over to Dan and let him talk about the outside. I just, I want to say that the team, there's a huge team at the office, of course, working on things. They have been coalescing together for weeks, spending weekends and working really hard. And we've given them lots of feedback coming from the staff here at Bethel Park, but also internally. Some of the impact of those conversations, one of the things was to make sure that we add a little bit more of an elementary factor to the outside of the building, and then you'll see the follow-through Kayla will present to the interiors. Daniel?
Thanks, Dan. So, so yeah, we, we did listen to the elementary factor here, and we're trying to stay true to the idea that, you know, we want, we want students to feel as though they're in nature, inside the building and out. And, and there's, there's a bit of a thematic thing here. It feels sort of like a state park, maybe, but it's, it's really, it's Bethel Park, right? So we're looking at, at rhythms and colors that you might find in nature. So, you know, nature doesn't repeat itself explicitly. It tends to, you know, you have a three and a two and a two and a two and a three and a three and a two, and so it gives it sort of a playful or musical thing. And so you can look up at the way we're, we've split up the windows, and there's, there's sort of a playful module there, and we introduced some color. You might wonder why there's a tree growing in the right-hand window, or it's your left. So there's, we're introducing patterns and, and shapes and sort of fantastical ideas that you might have in nature. And there's a little pergola that you get as you, as you approach the building. As, as a means for wayfinding, as well as security, we've created a raised crosswalk as you approach the building, and we thought it would be fun to treat that like a bridge. So there's a little bit of a color in the pavement to make it feel like you're crossing a river and entering your, your space. There's two main components to this building. One is sort of a classroom educational component, and the other is sort of a collaborative steam public area. And you can tell what those are.
Just one question.
Yes, sir.
On the, that treatment on the outside, you know, like with the stream, it looks great.
Yeah.
It looked great the first year.
Will it last?
Looked great in the summer, but after a few winters of salt and plowing and things like that, what, what's going to be like the durability or the maintenance cost of something like that?
Sure. We're working with HRG, our civil engineer, to ensure that that's a lasting element. Right now, we're using a thermoplastically fused material, so it's, it's part of the pavement.
Oh, okay. It's not just a coating, exterior coating?
It's not just paint.
Okay.
So there's, there's two different languages to the building that you can see here in this image. One is the classroom language. Classrooms tend to be pretty repetitive. We're trying to break up that rhythm with some panels that are wooden. If you, it's hard to see in this image, but these panels are going to have a very faint hue of red on the, or orange on the, on the sides of them. So it's, it's a subtle move, but it'll make a big impact when you're there in person. And then we have these boxes that are, that are the public areas. So on the left-hand side, you have the, the library and the media center, and what else is in that? Admin, and you've got the student movement area, and then you've got some areas with classes, and then you've got the area on the right, which is the bridge. This connects the two academic wings, and it's, it's also a collaborative area. Of course, you're standing in the K-5 play area. It's a playground. The most excited sighting part we have in, in your site plan to me is this, this learning area, sort of a steam courtyard that you have. It is directly adjacent to the steam classrooms, so they have direct access outside. You can have a classroom out here. We're going to do some bio, bio rhythm studies in this area, and we're also going to do some rainwater collecting in here that can become a learning feature for the kids. I think that's the last we have of the exterior.
Kayla?
Oh, yeah, you're going to need this.
Can you hear me? Okay.
Can I be your brother?
Sure. So continuing on with the nature theme, and we also still have the park theme, but we've adapted it here and there to listen to comments from you guys, comments from administration, comments internally. We, in our nature theme, have gone for a couple of things. We pulled from sunrise, we pulled from sunset. We also played with the idea of this dappled light, which is just the light going through trees within a forest or any tree area. And we took it a step further to also listen to your comments about wayfinding and how that is important to you and also for the children and staff to navigate through the building. So you see a little sneak peek of that there with the pine cone and the dandelion and the ferns. Some of the other things you see on this slide are just colors that we'll also be introducing to you as we go along. So this is one of the first views. It's actually the first thing you would see when you come into the building. This is the secure vestibule, and you have your, the secure part right behind you, where you would enter and then be able to go into the administration offices. So that's directly behind you in this view. Looking ahead is the auditorium, so that is beyond the boy in the blue sweater, I believe. There's also your security office, which is behind the stoned wall. And then when you go through the doors to your right, or I should say my right, is how you enter into the rest of the building. So you're starting to see our play on these motifs of fern and dandelion. You're starting to see some of the colors and also uses of wood and stone.
And this is also that antispace. So you're secure from the point of view that you can't get into the building unless you're allowed into the building. So this is a good spot for parent pickup. You know, on, on weather days and things like that, it's a plenty large space, large enough to accommodate quite a few people, and then also acts as another antispace to the LGI room on event nights, too. So you can come and go straight into that room instead of going into the lobby of the building if you choose, or, you know, you can go out, of course, too. So we don't normally do vestibules that big, but I think, given all of the people and a lot of the challenge, and we work, we work really hard with administration on security and how to also, what is it like as a parent? Is it one of the buildings? And are we caring for how, how they have to deal? So it's turned out to be a pretty nice beginning to the adventure, I think, of entering the building. Good process.
Going through those doors, you can see the floor pattern has changed a little bit in color. This is starting to introduce some colors that are pulled from our classroom wings, which are bringing in some items from a forest and a meadow theme. We have introduced pegboard onto the wall or magnetic surface of some kind so that you can display items without doing a more traditional display system that, quite frankly, don't get used very much anymore. We have also.
I was going to say the library. One of the first things you see when you come in into the lobby is education.
Yes.
The library is right up above through those glass windows. It's, it got reflection on it, so you can't see it in this picture, but, so hopefully we'll be able to see that kind of activity. It's always nice to be able to see education.
The ceiling in here is our play on the dappled light. That's the linear fixtures and the square fixtures in the ceiling, so that's how we try to bring that in to the building. And directly in front, or all the way at the end of that hall, is our main navigation board. So that will help direct you through the building. So that will help direct you through the building. It'll let you know where the classroom wings are, where you can go to the gym. And it also incorporates our wayfinding with a fern, dandelion, and pine cone. This is an image of the cafeteria. So the space we were just in is behind you currently. And in this space, we are introducing some colors in the furniture as a way to tie everything in from the classroom wings. We have large LED display surfaces where it says like "field trip." You can use those to let kids know if there's a field trip or to let kids know if you're going to have an early dismissal, anything you want to do. You can also use those for evening activities if you're having parents come in. They have lots of purposes.
And then up at the top there, you can see the windows where some kids are standing. That whole area in the background is the park pathway. So that's your major connector to all of the classroom wings and the special spaces. And so you'll, when you're, you always will be able to find your way relatively easily because as soon as you come out of the classroom wing, everything is along, the park path is organized along the path. And so visually, you can see down and you can see out and across. And so it's, I think the building is organized fairly well where we've ended up.
Is this the K-12 cafeteria? Or is it...
This one is the K-12. And then just around the corner is the...
Three, four, five.
Three, five.
Okay.
We also introduced a film on the glass as a means of kind of diluting vision a little bit, but not to the point of not being able to see through because it's still important to keep the transparency as well.
And it keeps you from seeing smudges.
So you just asked about, yes, this is the three, five side here. And directly in the left field vision is just a small gathering space where you would have a writable surface. Someone can come here, pull out a group of students, or it can be used in afternoon activities as well. We are playing on all the different colors that you'll soon see have been used within our classroom wings. And we are also trying to designate the serving lines in a way that helps direct the kids to. So you'll see a blue area and an orange area, and those are your two serving line entrances. So this is one of the first classroom entries. This is on the ground floor. So if you would go through the kind of like blue arched area, that would lead you down to all your classes. Yes, this one is kindergarten. And we have a K on the signage outside of this area in a way to designate that. And that's also a play on like trail, trail markings. So it's called a blaze, to be specific. So we use that to go along with the park theme as well. And this area also was requested to have a little stage area for puppeteering or anything else. So we've incorporated that with the wood finished flooring in there. You have seating with stairs. And there's also a play in the floor pattern that students can use to kind of play hopscotch or be interactive and play with each other if you have an indoor recess.
And the K-2 library is also just to the right there, just past the woman on the right, the teacher on the right. You can see it says stories in the background there. That's where that library is. Small library right down outside here. So they have an opportunity to grow outside of that space also and use the corridor space for learning.
This is the same area, just a floor up. So this is your main floor, the one that you come in on if you were to enter the building. And this floor particularly is a yellow theme for meadow. The back wall, I haven't discussed that yet, but you can see there's kind of an ombre effect that is the light show. So the wood pieces that are going vertically up the wall are supposed to represent trees. And we've lined either side of those with lights. And you would be able to manipulate them with any colors that you want. And we just chose to show you today an ombre effect as it relates to sunrise or sunset.
So if you remember, one of our earlier sketches, Dan had nice colored streams coming down. We were actually painting on the wall and everything like that. And part of the collaboration with the Children's Museum was to use some technology and actually use LEDs to change color. And so they're programmable, and so the wall is actually white, but we'll be able to use the spectrum and have some fun with it. Kids will love it.
So that was going to be my question, they are programmable, so you can put them on a schedule then, daily schedule?
Yeah. They can fade in and out. I think they can blink, they can do all sorts of things.
Okay.
Should be like a tree, the rest of the tree.
Yeah.
Yeah. If you wanted it to go as far as programming it to music, you can do that as well.
I like it. It's a simple thing, doesn't cost very much, and will make a big difference, I think, in this space. Especially at nighttime, parent-teacher night's going to be fun.
Yeah. So this is also on the first floor. We just rotated to the right 90 degrees. And in this view, you can kind of see down onto the ground for a little bit. You can see up onto the second floor. And we, I think, really wanted to show you how the railing is working and how it kind of relates to children and safety. But I think it's just another nice view.
Yeah, everything's a little bit taller than normal, taller than code requirements. And we played a little peek-a-boo kind of scenario. So we tried solid panels and then break up with glass so that it isn't this, there's a little bit more of an enclosed feeling when you're on the stairs or on the upper levels looking down, but it's, you still have the opportunity to look down, but it isn't just glass, like at the mall kind of a thing. And it kind of plays a little bit along with the theme, too. We're trying to introduce, you see wood coming, when you drive up, you see some wood on the outside of the building, you see the stone, you see those warm materials, earthy materials working their way on the inside of the building, too.
So we've talked a little bit about our theme as it relates to a park. And we kind of expanded it out into different ecosystems and explored wetlands, meadow, and forest. This brings in color. It also incorporates wayfinding with the use of color and symbols. And also helped us determine our ceiling plans, our floor patterns. It is really the concept as a whole. The ground floor is wetlands, the middle or main floor is meadow, and the top floor is forest. Some of the images that are in here, like the fern, the dandelion, and the pine cone, you'll be able to see that are used in graphics on the walls, and they'll also be used in graphics on signage. There's been discussions, too, about teaming with the school once the children are in the building. You can use those to help create your teams, if you want to use your T-shirts still. It's a way, a way to bring everything together. So the floors, the, when you first walk into the building, the right side would be kindergarten, second, and fourth. And we have not only colors but shapes, and then your symbol. So the kindergarten is a triangle taken from a fern. The first floor is pink. And then the blue is used as a unifying color. So there are a couple of colors, and two of them are secondary. You would have pink and yellow, and blue is used as a unifier. And the second, third, fourth, and fifth grade are used in a similar way. Sorry if I'm being confusing with that. Showing you the image will help clear it up. So this is an example of an activity area in the kindergarten wing. This is actually all the way at the end of the corridor. If you would go through those double doors, you would be in the fire stair. And...
No one's going to know that.
Just to give us...
It's just a classroom huddle space. So when the classrooms come together, they all open up into a larger space, which is a team area.
The, some key features within one of these activity areas is you have a writable surface. You'll have a magnetic surface to use in any way that you'd like. There's also flexible furniture, lockers to be accessible. And then we also have a hand washing station, which the little boy is standing at there. And the colors in this corridor, the blue, which is the blue triangle in the bottom right corner of the slide, that's your unifying color. And the pink happens to be this specific wing's main color. This is the, what we're calling the bridge in one of the classrooms. You're still on the ground floor. So the back of this image is the bridge area. If you'd go through there, it would lead you to the other side of the wing, the first floor wing. And we have the triangles on the ceiling, bringing in that shape, also playing with it in the light fixtures. And you have your graphic, which in these areas is always near your activity wall. So it will help locate children to those activity areas or staff.
So one of the things, I know visually the spaces are nice and everything, but, and we don't typically show plans, and so we're trying to stick with that from a security point of view. But just a reminder, we go from group space, bigger space, to shrunk-down corridor, normal corridor space, and then back to a bigger space. So there's these senses of places where they can actually use the corridor as space, and then you transfer through. So if you can see beyond where the little boy is standing, that just goes into a normal corridor scenario. And you follow that tunnel until you get to the next group space. So it's a wayfinding tactic, but it also saves space for us and allows us to place people, essentially.
This is one of those open spaces that he was describing. So now we've gone to the middle floor or the main floor. And this is another one of those activity areas. So we treated them similarly and just introduced different colors and different symbols. So the middle floor happens to be the dandelion, and the unifier color is yellow. And this accent color for this wing is ATL. And we have a taste of some of our materials here. So you're welcome to walk up at any time, and you can look at them. This is the bridge for the main floor. And directly, this area here is one of the conference rooms, which happens on the first and second floor at the corners. The hand washing area is located through here. We created little wet areas, either a place where you're washing hands or you're stopping to get a drink or fill up a water bottle. And we are also, I think something that's fun is with our accent paint, we've also incorporated it into the lockers to add an extra splash of color. And the ceiling is the dappled light again. So we're bringing that in in different spaces of the building, not only to be cohesive, but to draw attention to areas that we want people to realize are more of a focal point. So the bridge area, because it directs you to the other side of the building, we wanted to draw attention to it. And now we're on the second floor, which is the forest floor. You have your pine cone graphic, and you have green as your unifying color. And this accent is orange. The symbol is a square, but we've rotated it to kind of mimic a diamond, a shape that was pulled from the pine cone. And here you are at your bridge again. So the second corridor on this floor, the accent color is purple. So you can see a hint of that there.
Is this the last one? Oh, classrooms.
So we also wanted to show you what the classrooms could possibly look like. And we gave an example of the ground floor, K in one, which is blue, and the middle floor, two and three, yellow. The blue tall cabinets here, actually proposing for those to be writable surface, so that's why they're appearing so glossy. We accented them with a colored laminate, incorporated the acoustic panels, like you're doing over at the middle school, since that's been working so well, and did a fun pattern in the floor. The back wall paint color is the same as what's used in the corridors, it's just toned down a bit. And I think this is the last slide with images.
Okay. So lots to unpack, lots going on. Any questions?
I have one question. Going back to that secure vestibule. So I'm a school secretary, and I'm looking at this saying, where, where is the person who's in charge of letting people in and out of those doors going to be?
Yeah.
And I also see that blind corner where the stone is. I see a slender window, but I see in that corner, between that slender window and the glass, a place that could be a potential hiding place for someone to come in. Will there be cameras? I mean, I'm not asking for specific security, I understand all of that. But from my perspective, when someone walks into my building...
Yeah.
I am that first person that they encounter, and I want to make sure that I'm safe as well as I can see, you know, that, that view of who's, I'm letting through that second set of doors.
So very good question. And what you're asking about isn't even in this picture.
Okay.
So there's actually two vestibules. There is a minor vestibule, which is the actual secure vestibule.
Okay.
Which is basically to the back of your view. When you're standing here, it would be right behind you.
Okay.
So once the school's locked down, you have to go to, into a small captured vestibule that is secure, has buzz-in, you can't get anywhere, it's not in this, it's adjacent to this.
Okay.
And that is where we have a transaction window where the administration will greet folks, and you can drop off a lunch that was left behind, or you can sign in and wait for someone to come pick you up, give you your driver's license, do all the normal security things. So it's a sort of, we have a double situation going on. It's not very much fun to show it in this kind of stuff.
Sure.
But all the things you just said are being directly accounted for.
Okay.
And so this is another level, basically, we look at it. How can we do events? How can we, you do, when kids are coming in the morning and leaving in the afternoon, can we still keep the school secure even during that environment? Which is something that isn't often thought about. And then behind that brick window, the window in the brick wall and the door with the glass on the other side, that's our security officer. That's the chosen location, right in the middle of all of the activity. They also have another way out, and separately, too. And that is, of course, all bulletproof glazing and things like that. And they have a full complement of computer monitors watching what's going on. So the glass is maybe not necessary, considering that they can see every place in the school just from their location.
Sure.
But we also wanted to be able to have that itinerant immediately to be able to be right there in a jiffy if you need it.
Sure. And then, thank you for that explanation, because that was the first thing I noticed. I was like, oh, my gosh. And I had thought that you would probably thought of that. The second thing that I'm seeing, like with the hand washing station and those low lockers, I'm also seeing, you know, a place for kiddos to duck behind where you can't see them.
Yeah, we're not too worried about that.
I'm sorry?
We're not too worried about that. We're gonna, we're thinking, it's not very tall. We're not too worried about that, we're gonna, we're thinking, it's not very tall in the first place, a teacher can easily see what's going on. But we're also, it's an activity space, the kids are supposed to be milling around and doing their thing, and we have good glass from multiple classrooms, looking on all sides, so if one teacher can't see, another one can.
Okay.
We have that possibility. We also, at this level, this is kind of interesting, because it is a good question. When we do elementary schools, all the kids are generally supervised. When they're doing an activity or something like that, you don't let kids just go out in the corridor by themselves, there's usually an aide or a para or someone there, if the teacher isn't there themselves, too, when those kinds of activities are going on. It looks a little bit different when we go to places like middle school, and we're trying to do the same kind of activity scenario there, too. The other format for us is the challenge of lockers. Getting enough lockers, getting them to not overtake the space, that was probably one of our biggest problems or challenges. And then when we decided to move to a shared sink scenario, we had to try to find a way to put the sinks in a location that was not down the hall and around a corner, that was visible, so that it could be quick access for teachers to watch if there's game, gamesmanship and things like that, too.
I guess what I'm seeing head-on, like, you know, is if you slice the wall here and are looking into this room, which I'm on this one, this is where all of that is. What's behind me, as I'm looking in this room? Are there closed doors, so this is an enclosed space all the way around?
You're in the, you're in your corridor, a corridor that leads you to your classrooms, which are all the doors off to your sides.
Okay.
Was it this, this one?
Um, four. There you go, four.
Up there. Yeah.
Yeah, back, back up one. I'm sorry, right here. Like, I want to know what's behind me, as I'm looking at this.
Uh, yeah, what's behind you is...
A hallway.
The hallway, restrooms, things like that.
Got it. So this is where it converged, like?
Yeah, you're coming out of a regular hallway into an open space.
Gotcha.
Basically.
Okay.
The doors on the left and right side are classroom doors.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you very much. That clarifies it for me.
Yeah, good questions, thanks. Anybody else?
It looks awesome, thank you. I do have a question, not specifically on the design, but there is a House bill pending, 1302, about solar for schools, and I'm wondering if that bill should pass, and if we qualify, are we able to switch, build that into the plans, like, or are we at a too late point?
So you could easily put solar panels on it if you chose to do that. I'll have to be corrected on this if I'm not right, but I, earlier, we had plans to actually have electric to the roof for an inline, if you should choose in the future to add solar panels, we have it pre-set up to be able to plug in on the roof. And so normally, we just did this at Riverview, we put a whole bunch of panels on the roof, and it was sort of phase one, so we powered up, and I think there's 25 panels up on the roof, and that they are fully expandable, you just keep unplugging panels in. And so, I'm hoping every year they get a few more panels and keep on going, fill the whole roof for the high school, that would be awesome. But you have a nice big roof, you could do that, too.
Okay, thanks. I was hoping it would be flexible enough, that if that should work out, we could still do it.
Yeah, I'm hoping more incentives and grants for that kind of stuff. I just actually looked on the website today to try to find what you're talking about, and they actually have some for businesses, but there wasn't anything for schools. So still a long way to go, but thank you. Yeah, it looks great, it really does. All right, we clean our mess up.
Would anyone like to see anything before we clean it up?
So, did Darren join us? Okay.
Yeah, I'm here, Barry.
Okay, great. We're just gonna, there's only one item under Personnel Committee, and I guess, do you want to take that and the goals to add it to the consent agenda? So this is for the extended school year staffing? Any questions? We may have lost Darren again. Okay. There's only one.
No, I'm here, Barry.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, there's just one item, the approval of extended school year staffing. So, any discussion on this? Okay, hearing none, I would like to move this forward.
To the consent agenda? Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Grisbet, can you take the 12 Finance Committee items?
Yes, I can.
Before you do that, are you moving Item 3 and Facilities to the consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Jim recommended, yes.
All right, we have 12 items tonight under the Finance Committee agenda. Item number 1, May 2023 salaries and bills. 2, April 2023 financial report. 3, budgetary transfer. 4, approval of student services contract with the AIU for 2023, 2024. 5, commitment of fund balance for legal settlement, settlement in the amount of $4,000. Number 6, acceptance of grants, two grants here, from the Bethel Park Education Foundation in the amounts of $5,763.30 to be used to fund the IMS Guitar Class Project, and $1,200 to be used to fund the library book supporting social and emotional learning. Item number 7, the approval of insurance policy renewals. 1 for the 2023, 2024 insurance renewal rates for workers comp with UPMC at a premium of Property generality, crime, auto, school leaders, inland marine, and umbrella with Utica National Insurance at a premium of $199,760. Cyber liability with CRC at a premium of $38,444. Active assailant with Markle at a premium of $6,755. Item number 8, payment for the new K-5 elementary school project to Macero in the amount of $13,228.57. Item number 9, payment for IMS Phase 2 renovations to Hayes Design Group for a total of $19,430.22. Item number 10, payment for the IMS Phase 2 renovations to Site Logic for a total of Item number 11, Pathfinder School Administrative Budget for a total of $318,555. This budget is operating without requesting any contribution from the participating schools. And then finally, item number 12, approval of Steel Center for Career and Technical Education budgets. We've got an operating budget for $7,266,729, and administrative budget for $219,282. Perkins budget for $387,000, and $74,034 for workforce development. Does anyone have any questions about any of those 12 items?
On the Pathfinder one, it says they're not requesting any contribution from participating schools, is that for tuition? Because I see there's a, there is an allocation on the last page of the, of their budget, where they've broken down required contribution by district, where, it only looks like about $3,800 or something, or, no, I guess I don't know how to read it. So they're not asking for any facilities funding or contribution from us then for Pathfinders?
Is that correct, Doc?
So they're just taking out of their, their budget surplus?
We pay for students that attend Pathfinder.
Excuse me?
We do pay for students that attend Pathfinder.
Okay.
This is to operate the building?
But this is, yeah, this is typically, when we address this, this is just for facilities and maintenance. So they're not asking for any contribution for facilities or maintenance?
No, we, we, Mr. Modrick might want to explain the grant funding.
So at this time, we had a proposal brought a couple months ago by potential money that we're going to have to extend to them for capital improvement.
Right, for capital improvement.
But at this point in time, the IU has donated money to the three schools that they serve, Pathfinder, Mon Valley, and Sunrise. And that money is noted, like $500,000 for capital improvements, to be, so therefore, the request of the five schools that are part of the jointure, for us to pay for these repairs will now, is not necessary.
Okay.
This is just to show us, this, this district, since we're a jointure school, how their budget is operated throughout the next upcoming year.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, hearing none, I move all 12 items to the consent agenda.
Second. If you need a second.
I don't.
You don't need a second.
I appreciate it nonetheless.
I'll second you any day.
You can have a third, too, if anybody wants, or a fourth. Okay, policy items, Ms. Turner.
There are four policies up for first reading tonight, the enrollment of students in 200, 202 eligibility of non-resident students, 242.1 student expenses for conferences and conventions, and 816 district social media. Dr. Walsh, I believe we're going to talk about 200 under the discussion.
So, yeah, 200 actually has to do with changes to enrollment required for us to deal with homeless students who would be transported to the school district. There are some other language changes in there.
Right, and then 202 is the non-resident dealing with separation, divorce, and those kinds of issues, correct?
Correct.
Student media expenses was just a change in how we were...
We, we wanted to match policy with, we wanted, we needed to match two policies, because in one policy, we require a certain chaperone-to-student ratio, and in another policy, we claim to only cover the costs of one chaperone for an overnight trip or an extended trip. So this was trying to bring both policies in line. If we're requiring a student ratio, we should be paying for the number of chaperones we require.
Okay. And then the district's social media policy is just to make sure that it's only the district's items on the social media policy.
Right, this was something the board had asked about, getting into the queue for updating by the summer, so that starting next year, we can, we can have a little tighter policy on what's promoted through social media on, through the district's social media accounts, and it's not a, you know, putting out everybody's fundraising programs and everybody's collections and everybody's sponsorships and so forth.
Correct. Those are all up for first reading, so nothing else needs to be done. Number 2 is for discussion only, number 200, and the AR for the classification of enrollment. This is for homelessness and divorce and separation, adoption, all those, correct?
Right, so as, as policies change, so do the administrative regulations, ARs are the district-created implementation procedures for the administrators to follow when a policy is enacted by the district. So you don't have to approve it, because the policy is what you approve, and we implement your policy with the AR.
So just back to the policy that's supporting this, then, are these changes in line with the PSBA or the kind of state standard?
My review of them was yes, I believe Megan, when we had talked, said yes also.
Okay.
Yeah, 200 and 202 were PSBA-recommended changes, 242 and 816 were changes that we talked about internally.
Sure, okay. Okay. So there's nothing that will go on the consent agenda?
Correct, these will fall under policy again at the next meeting.
Okay. Then under Other, there's a MOU for the Bethel Park Municipal Police and Bethel Park School District. Does somebody want to just explain that one?
Sure, it's, it's a semi-annual, every two years, we would update this MOU with our local police department, and this is the time where we would put it forward to the board for approval. Chief for the Bethel Park Police Department has already reviewed it and signed off on it. We had one change on that more recently, thanks to some input from Mrs. Janasek on one of the recommendations on how students, protected handicapped students would be treated in a, by the police department, and that's, change is reflected in the draft that's posted here.
Did Chief O'Connor sign off on that?
Yes.
Thank you, Dr. Walsh.
Yeah.
And Ms. Turner, I appreciate your help with that.
Okay. Any objections with moving that to the consent agenda? Okay. Okay, good, that's the end of our committee agenda. Are there any public comments on anything we talked about in this meeting, any meeting, or anything related to school matters? Two minutes. Okay. I'm going to delay the board comment till our third section, the third sector of this long evening, okay? So from now, we're gonna, we're gonna move into the business meeting, we just have a few short items to discuss and vote on as a part of our business meeting, so everybody here at the, in the boardroom, please move to what's called the May 9th regular voting meeting.
Darren, we're not changing web either.
No, stay, keep that the same, so.
I got you.
Since we have not adjourned again, there's no call to order, no pledge, no roll call. So for this item, or for these few items we have in the voting agenda here, if there's any public comments on this agenda, please step forward. Nothing, no call-ins? Okay. Okay. Okay, Mr. McGregor, can you take the Personnel Committee item?
Yes, under Personnel, there's one item, and that item is approval of staff changes. Any comment?
Dr. Walsh, can you explain?
Sure, this is pretty much an annual event, it starts here tonight, where we ask the board to officially open or close positions, which then triggers internal movement and golden ticket cashings and all sorts of various human resource activity, which then leads to, at the end of the month, a different motion, assigning people to new positions based on what you've opened or what you've closed. In summary, these positions start with, we started the year with 64 and 1/2, and by opening and closing, what's here will, will open next year with 64 and 1/2 positions in the elementary. So it's essentially a movement of people into hotspots where there's class size needs, but it's a net, no net change.
And I like the approach of doing it this way, because in the past, there has been some times where in one meeting, we'll close positions, and then we'll get a barrage of emails that, oh, you're cutting teachers, and no, we're not, we're just trying to figure out where they're going to go. And so it's nice to deliver all these in one, so that you can see, you know, what positions are being closed, but one, what ones are being opened, so that's, that's good, thank you.
So we're asking for a movement, motion tonight, because then we can keep on our track to get the changes made in time for the board to approve the assignments for the end of the month, before the teachers depart for the summer.
All right. Okay. Any other questions? Was there a second?
Second.
Okay, so it was moved by Mr. McGregor, seconded by Mr. Scalzo?
Voting is open. Motion carries.
Okay, Mr. Modrick, can you take the one item under Faci- Okay, Mr. Modrak, can you take the one item under Facilities?
Yes, sir, we have one item. Board, Squad, and Directors approves the administration's recommendation to award the bid for a remediation of water at Bent Jimin Franklin Elementary School to Dom Felino Construction LLC in the amount of $19,500. Any discussion? Explanation?
Perhaps Dr. Korsinski can explain the need for this project.
There's a considerable amount of water runoff with the topography of our district, and it runs down across a sidewalk that generally becomes a hazard when it's, when it's wet. The scenario that stands, there's three residents that are in that area that we feel more comfortable bidding it out to a construction company because of the digging and the necessary items. There are three gas lines that are in the area, and we would rather contractor take on that responsibility than our in-house facilities.
So, when you say water, we're talking about a natural spring of some sort that just runs off the hillside on the far corner of Franklin?
Correct.
As you come down Florida, it'd be on your right-hand side.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
Second.
So, motion was made by Mr. Modrak, seconded by Mr. Scalzo?
I did?
He thought.
I did?
Voting is open.
We're getting there. Is that gravity?
We do.
That's gravity, right.
Motion carries?
Thank you. Mr. Grisbet, can you take the Finance Committee item?
Yes, we have one item tonight on, just for information, just an update to the Fund 31, Fund 32 financials. Mr. McCallister, is there anything you'd like to talk about that, or just the routine update?
I mean, there's not much new to report. I mean, it's pretty standard reports. With the change at IMS, you're probably going to have a little bit of money left over at the end of that project that will probably apply toward a Phase III, because there's still some things to do. You'll probably have to add to that in some way to finish the complete Phase III, but it looks like you will have some funds left over.
Sounds good, thank you very much.
Okay, so, no action is required on that at all?
No.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Last call for any other public comments? Okay, nobody online? Okay. Any board comments?
I do, I have a board comment. Um, tomorrow's our life skills prom. And I just wanted to give a big fat thank you to Andy over at the Bethel Park. Were you gonna say that? Education Foundation, or Community Foundation, sorry. Because he paid for the kids to go to the prom, which is awesome. I had a fundraiser. So, yeah, yay, that's awesome.
Um, no, I wanted to say thank you and hope all teachers across the district this week are enjoying their Teacher Appreciation Weeks. I know I was in my child's school today, and it's decorated, there's signs outside, there's, you know, things for them to pick from throughout the day, snacks, refreshments. So, kudos to PTO, PTAs for doing that. But the big lift is from every teacher in this district and the administration here. So, know that we are very grateful for what you do on an hourly basis at times. Thank you.
Happy Teacher Appreciation Week, and thanks for the great presentations today. I thought they were very informative and definitely, you know, helped me feel good about the direction that we're going in, in terms of curriculum.
Any other comments? Yeah, I gotta say that the, the process for the curriculum that, you know, we launched as a part of the strategic plan is, is great. I feel good about it, that, you know, it's gone through the right kind of review. It came to us in a real professional way. And, yeah, nice job.
Thank you, I'll just, I wanna, of course, appreciate the teachers who were here to support these motions, facilitators. And if, if it wasn't said, you certainly could feel a synergy of that these are important initiatives, that everybody, from administration all the way through the faculty, feel strongly about and want to kind of lock arms when they bring them forward for your approval. So, I want to, it really extend out appreciation for that group that came tonight and the group that wasn't available tonight, but also had a play in what, what was presented. Especially Mrs. Figlioli and Mrs. Wells, who had to prepare on any and every possible, possible contingency for how this was gonna go forward. It, it went a lot longer than we anticipated, but there was a lot of, we made a lot of inroads and progress tonight.
Well, you know, the perception that has always come before, when a class comes class by class by class, it seems like an island of education, okay? And there's no connectivity. And so, when we have, you know, we go through this process, you know, I just get a good feeling that, you know, and we heard it many times, you know, many, men, you know, we heard it around the, the, the middle school reading, okay? Where people have done work, they've ensured that there's connectivity between the classes. And so, this is a good way to build and review curriculum. So, you know, it's, it's the first time that we've kind of gone through the whole process. But it's a good process, I got a lot of confidence in it.
Thank you.
No other comments? A motion to adjourn? All opposed? Oh, that was a trick, okay? All in favor? Aye. Meeting adjourned.